Okay, it's going through.
Okay, it's recording now. Yeah, um, I still remember that, uh, you know, we had meeting, uh, I think in February, if I'm not mistaken, early February. And then the, the, the registration was out of which I shared with the house. And, uh, we, we also were proposing if, um, the place that we're using that was, uh, getting higher every year. When, uh, to, 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 uh, buy the place before coronavirus came. Yeah. So, is, is there anything to be deliberated on that? Before we, we go for the matter of the day.
On the issue of, uh, of, or maybe, maybe you can just keep, uh, mom with regards to that.
The issue.
Yeah.
Of the, of the, how last month?
Yes.
Okay, um, I know their house didn't know this, uh, in detail. Uh, when we approached the owner, he actually said we must make deposit on the place and, uh, you know, during the lockdown, there was nothing coming in. And except just one parent who was perpetually, um, paying for the fees of the two children. It was only one parent was, uh, sold that way. But other parents, probably they lost their job or whatever. They couldn't pay, uh, the children fees. So when I discussed with, um, the seller, they told me to get a, a report, a, a financial report and, uh, from accountant and also, um, the board should also write a letter of which I quickly spoke with, uh, Sister Mancy then because we couldn't meet. And, uh, Sister gave, so we tracked a letter and, uh, we got their ID if they, if they can still remember. And Pastor Steward also helped to get the account. Uh, the accountant gave us a report. By the time we got all those things ready, then the seller said, uh, the owner wants the deposit of which we cannot at that time. There was no money. So that is how we could not proceed with the buying. Uh, you get the point. So, uh, in January, I think in January or February, because we were only having one child coming to school. Uh, we, we met with the owner because he was still persuading us to pay for the place. And, uh, we later told him that we cannot because the students are not here back. Then he suggested that we have to leave the place. He's going to put it on sale or on rent. Then we said, fine, we decided to move out. So that is how the way we closed the, we, we, her last, her last not right. So as of, as of now, it's closed and, uh, we're still managing with the two, um, the barrier and the mountain. Thank God that God is restoring us with that. Yeah.
But with regards to the, the number with those two, how is it, uh, barrier and mountain?
Uh, barrier, but the grace of God is beauty enough. Um, because we're not having enough children initially in the beginning. So I only called two teachers to come in to help. Then we gradually build up. They are saying telling them to come one after the other until we are where we are today. Today we are up to sixty-two children in Berya. And in Marvin, uh, we also had problem early, earlier on. We had problem in January and in February. In March, they started coming in. Right now we have thirty-six children in Marvin. Yeah.
I think it's a good progress. I think so far, uh, taking into account that more especially a lot of parents, they are working from home and others that think they have decided just to keep their children at home. I think you have done, uh, a great work. I think being, uh, the principal and also the teachers. I think that shows the confidence parents they have in the school. So I think also, uh, I was just, uh, imagining what we can do maybe differently, more especially with what we have at hand in terms of the COVID, uh, in terms of the technology and, uh, how we can be able to be more innovative in terms of, uh, trying by all means, uh, to have as many kids at as possible so that we can leverage the opportunity at the moment. So that's one of the things I just wanted to bring up. One, confidence that the, the parents they have in the school. Number two, from our side, what are some of the things, what are some of the, the factors or the elements we can think about in terms of, uh, taking an opportunity of the, the situation at the moment, knowing that, uh, some parents they would rather have their children at home, but at the same time, we can maybe take advantage of saying, okay, we can provide certain tuition to you. So are we still thinking in those lines so that maybe we can still increase our revenue? Our income? Are we doing that at the moment or do we have those facilities?
Uh, what we're able to do is to send, um, messages to all our old parents. And, uh, the feedback I had from there was, uh, that they, they are working from home. And some of them said they've lost their job. That is why they cannot come in. But some are coming gradually, but we had new, a lot of new children as well. You know, and, uh, what, uh, brings these children is our children going home. They see what they are doing and they are quite, uh, happy with, uh, what they see. And they also bring their, the, the, their children to our school. And these days I've, I let you the, uh, the teachers as well to always, uh, you know, uh, take a photo of the, the children, what they are doing in the classes. They, 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 uh, video them and send them to parents to see what they are doing in classes of which, uh, that also is, uh, keeping the parents, uh, informed. Because at times they don't know what they're doing in school, but when they see the children doing what they cannot do at home, they are quite happy. So that's one of the strategies that we, we use it. And also, uh, from time to time, I, um, we go out there to, from, you know, around us there and give pamphlet to, to, to parents. Those are the thing, two things that we're doing, uh, right now to bring in more children. You remember there are certain number of children that we have to also, um, have in the school. Uh, it's not like, uh, before where you take as many as the place can take. Social distances there. And, uh, like our school right there in Berya, one of the classes already overfull. Yeah, uh, we were supposed to take about fifteen children in that class, but in that class we have twenty. Yeah, and, uh, but some of that classes are still not full yet. So, um, we, we're not stopping with, because we don't know. Parents at times, you know, they might just come with one excuses, one pleasing excuses. Oh, I'm moving out from this place. I'm going where we are cannot bring my children here. So my, we might have such, uh, people in our means. So that's why we not stop taking, but we open another class, uh, or, you know, take those extra children to other classes. That's what we have in mind. But for Marvin, uh, we still have one class not occupied yet by students.
Hmm. So mom, with the, with the, if you have to open an extra class, will you be able to have extra, an ex a teacher? Will it be covered?
Uh, uh, for the space that we have. For the space that we have right now, we will not be able to, uh, hire another teacher. Actually, the baby class, we've closed the baby class because the baby, baby class was crawling, uh, last, last of last year. So I managed to keep the baby class teacher, but she was, uh, somebody I cannot cope with. Uh, they, she was having a lot of issues. I hardly, I, I, I do, I do have patience for them, but this one, she was, uh, not coping at all. So I decided to, during the COVID, I told her we are closing the, that class. And when we come back, we don't go to open it. And really, we didn't open the, that class right now because it's useless having two babies with one teacher and yet is not able to, uh, you know, manage with.
And, and the teacher was released.
Eh?
And, and that teacher wa- wa- was released?
Yeah, I, I just told her that the class is closed, so there's no place I can place her.
Okay. So how many have, uh, it's only her who has been affected?
Uh, not only her, other teachers, yeah, actually in Berya, we had the, uh, that two teachers. One, uh, came, but initially in the beginning of, uh, our reopening, she was not happy with the salary because there was no money coming. So she decided to go. I let her go because she said she will not manage. Uh, she cannot, uh, with her child there, the child was there also. And she was not paying for the child. And, uh, she just done, she was not really keen to continue. So I decided to let her go. Then the other one didn't come at all. The, the one, uh, one of the classes, the teacher did not, did not come. So I wouldn't bother about that. I called, I called, sent message. She was not, um, you know, receiving the messages. I don't know whether she was still around or she went to Zoom. So that one didn't come at all. So, and, um, but I was able to bridge the gap. I took one of the teachers from Bafu here because Bafu was not busy. So that is how we ended up last year. But for this year, the teachers are there. This continue. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Where did you disappear? Okay. All right. Yeah, that is it. Uh, and I, I, that is one of the issue I wanted to really, um, discuss because, um, I'm yet to submit the U I F, um, their names because they are no longer with us. And also in Marvin, we had about four teachers who, uh, did not come back. The, my sister there, the one that I always lived there. Nana, she, she resigned. She started her own school. And, um, what's her name? Uh, Rich, Rachel also left. She got another work. Uh, uh, also, um, uh, Sharon, Sharon also resigned because she thinks, uh, the children are not going to come to school. Because, uh, and that, uh, indeed initially there was, uh, a voila also didn't come back. So what we have there now in Marvin are new teachers. Can you hear me? We have new teacher.
Yes.
We have, we have, yeah, we have new teachers in Marvin. Except one who was taking care of the baby class. That is the only, uh, teacher left from the old because of money. All of them is because of money. So, yeah, they couldn't, they, they were not patient enough. Yeah. I have with me here the insurance policy. Is insurance, uh, you remember Pastor Steward, the thing that you have made feed of last year? About insurance, eh? Uh, compensation for occupational injuries and disease arts. You remember?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't.
Yeah, we submitted it. They did, they, they didn't register us with, we submitted it again. And, uh, they did not register. I don't know why. So I decided to, um, we registered twice. I said we register, register twice.
Yep.
For the, uh, compensation for occupational injuries and diseases. Remember you helped me to feed those platform. I still have it. Yeah. They, they didn't, they returned it.
I think we will try again because we just need to, um, try until they, they accept. Because sometimes that's what happens before you, you know it and then they will be able to, uh, to respond positively.
Okay.
Yep.
So that is the issue and, uh, I just wanted to register the new, um, teachers and, uh, some of the teachers because they were not paid, uh, U I F. They were angry. Most of them actually stopped working just because of that as well. And, uh, those that are there, that they, they are still saying they are not going to register because they are not going to pay. I told them that is the right thing to do. If, if they penalize us, they are the one to pay the bills. So I have to. So now becau- because we becoming steady, I told them from this month end, we have to start again.
Oh, yeah. I think sometimes they don't realize the benefits. Uh, because also according to the communication from the, from the government, um, in terms of, uh, the payment, it was not going to be compulsory that everyone will get because certain organization, not everyone got the, the U I F. Uh, others, they were still pursuing. And also you know what happened in terms of some organization instead of paying employees, uh, the owners, they are the ones who are benefiting out of it. So the, the, the government had to suspend that process because there was no integrity in most of those, uh, organizations. So even a lot of people think they, they were so unfortunate not to get, because you find that others were getting double because the system, I think we used at that particular time didn't work, uh, well as they anticipated it to be. But, uh, we understand their frustration based on their obligations, uh, in life. So but just that factor of saying, because I didn't get my U I F there, if I can base my, uh, you know, my decision of not paying, I think it's not the right attitude. I think, uh, they need to be told that, yes, it didn't happen, but in future it can be able to assist them.
Yeah, yeah, that is what I told them. I said, if you today something happen and you are no longer working or this, who is no longer here, you can go and claim yourself.
Yeah.
Uh, although dur- during the COVID, they only pay, uh, pay two people twice. And that is, that is, is it. The, the agent I used to help us, uh, applied later told me I should not use the company, uh,
Account.
They are paying individuals. Yeah, I should not use the company, um, uh, to, 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 uh, apply for, for fund. I should use my own personal, um, account of which I gave to her and they also paid that, uh, once. And when they pay in, I also spread the money to them. I use it to pay staff. So, yeah. That is what happened. Okay, um, I think we, we almost, um, deal with the, uh, issue of what is going on in this school right now. Um, the way forward from where the COVID has, uh, left us, I think, uh, God has been a faithful that, uh, most of our children came back and, uh, new ones has come. And I'm still hoping that, um, in Marvin, we still get, uh, a lot of student there because this month, a lot of, uh, some of our old ones also has come back to school to ask for space. So I told them they can come, that the space is there for them. Yeah. Um, the only thing that we, we struggling with now is the bill that we're piling up in, uh, Marvin and in Berya. There were water bill. Um, we, we've gone to, to municipality to arrange, make arrangement. So setting a amount of, uh, uh, money. Uh, they actually shared for, spread it for two years. And so, uh, I'm actually waiting for the next bill. When we, uh, when the last year, November, I think, to, to make arrangements, they did arrange for us. But come the, uh, January, we could not pay because of, um, the number of students that were in the school then, we couldn't meet up. But in, we started paying February, we pay up to December. The, this, uh, January came, we didn't pay. Then February we paid, then they cancelled the, the arrangement because we fought it only one month.
Yeah, that, that's what they do, mom. Once you, you, you default, he, he, when they said, they default, they, they do not want to continue with that kind of arrangement and then they have to start another one. But I think, I think they do understand in terms of, one, this is a non, uh, uh, it's, it's a non-profitable organization. And at the same time, they know the challenges which are there. Uh, I think with the two years they have given, I think we just want to thank God for that. And, uh, we know like what you have mentioned and we are praying and standing with you in terms of, uh, having more children coming. And also God to give us wisdom in terms of how we can leverage in terms of the technology where we can be able to penetrate in the houses. Because the, the good thing about this platform is that if we can, maybe, maybe this could be another conversation for another time. We can just take advantage of how we can increase the, the numbers, not physically coming, but even at home, you know, those are some of the things, but it's, I know there's a lot of investment which requires a lot of resources, but we are serving a living God who can give us that kind of, uh, innovation to be able to, uh, at least cater for that. Because also when you provide that kind of service, like now we are on Zoom, parents need to have, uh, data bundles and all that kind of thing. So there's a lot of factors around that, you know? Yeah, but for now, I think we, we just need to maximize what we have. You have talked much about the teachers. If the teachers are happy, the, the kids are going to be happy and they're going to tell others and the numbers are going to be are increasing exponentially. So I think it's important, I think what we have now, we do the best with what we have. Yeah, and it's, it's good that you have mentioned that some of the teachers were not happy. They, they have left because the teachers, they are the first, um, I mean, they, they, they sell, they provide a service which sells to other people. It's, it's like, if they take care of the children and they see like the pictures you are sending, it sends a good signal like, oh, the teachers are happy. They are providing a good service for our children and, uh, the news goes on and before you know it, others are coming. So I think we need to emphasize on that and make sure that the teachers are happy also. I know the overheads are high, uh, and at the moment you cannot be able to add more overheads uh, at the moment. So I think you have done a great work at the moment. And we, we, we just need to appreciate that. So I think from. So, I think from my side, I'm just thinking of how we are going to uh increase the numbers and how we are going to be able to maintain and advance. Because that is also key, especially when you have got um uh uh when you have got uh people like um what we just mentioned now. A a lot of people who are coming around, you need to, I think, utilize the time you have.
Yeah, uh with the, like what you said, with the Zoom uh teaching. Uh, it will actually involve parents being there, number one. Two, they must have data because we cannot, because one of the teachers actually suggested if we can go home and teach them. Then, um, I I I said, uh because of this uh uh pandemic uh it will not be uh conducive for for them to be moving from house to house.
Yeah.
Which is not true.
I I wouldn't want to put uh the teacher in in in
At risk.
At risk. So, I just ruled that out. But this Zoom would would have been better.
If they have enough.
How many we have uh data to 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 be on Zoom and to be able to teach it then? And one thing with this with these kids, you
With this, with this, we play involved.
We need to be there with them. And they may not, they may take it as play.
Yeah.
This room is not for babies.
Yeah, and and also you you try by all means to uh not to compromise on the quality. Because if let's say, uh you send the teacher to go and teach the kids, they might compromise on the quality. So, also, the quality is important.
And it affects your pickup. Yeah.
Yes.
School now.
Yeah.
Now. So, uh that is it. Uh, with whatever we 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 doing right now. Um, like, we used to have a um outing. Because some parents also were asking for that outing activities. Then I told them, for now, we putting it on hold until it is safe.
Yeah.
So, all we do is to is indoor, indoor activities most of the time. So, yeah, and also, we also use that to raise funds, you know.
Hmm, yeah, it used to happen.
Yeah, that that, yeah, that's another loss of income.
Hmm.
Hmm. Yeah, we we we, that outing was really helping a lot.
Correct.
Because it helped us to keep some money aside for December when some uh
Another pain.
Condi running away. But, yeah. As most of them are getting it now, it's just few, few of them that are just about it. They prefer to go and use it for uh to to go to Cape Town for outing or debent for than to pay us at that time. But most, most parents, they understand when you explain to them, that's okay, it's it's true, it's true. But some, they still don't want to understand that we just still not go their way out. And the next, next year, you'll see one or two coming back. That is when we get them. Then others, others, they don't, they go to another school.
Yes, sir. Start again in another school.
Yeah, they will do the same thing.
The same thing.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, that is me for now. I'm happy with uh one of our teacher, Marvin. Is the one teaching grade R. She she is um she's uh somehow grown up and it's not these teenagers. And most children in her class, even when they are sick, the parents who says, sit down at home or go to, let me take you to the hospital. They they will refuse. They would say, no, I want, I want to go to school. So, it's really a plus to us.
Yeah, we we need to look after her.
Yeah, I I I've already discussed with her. Her class now, she don't, she don't, if she's, she doesn't even care. She want to take all the children to her class. I I always, I I always tell her, I say, you you cannot teach all the children. This is the number of the children you're supposed to be allowed to be. Then she would just say, no, mama, don't worry. I'll take care of them. She's very good for now. I've just made that she will not change.
Yeah, no, yeah. And and also, ma'am, what you have touched, what is important in terms of um the other teachers who are young. So, you remember, I think we have to be mindful that they are still trying a lot of things before they can be able to settle down. Because you find that the they they want to go to some places, they want to earn more. So, sometimes we should plan around that in terms of others, in terms of they decide to go for other opportunities. And I know when they are, when you are young, you change, I don't know how many generations much change until you get to the point whereby you just now want to settle down like this uh teacher you are talking about. She she has got a few opportunities at the moment. But these others, they still have opportunities to change. So, maybe we can plan around that. And how do we plan around that is in terms of the training, like herself. You can use her in terms of maybe one of the meetings you are having, how she managed to uh to train the kids and how the kids are happy in her class. So, she's an example whereby she can be able to give an encouragement to others. They need to hear that. Yeah, they need to hear that so that at least there is that morale in school in terms of how happy they are. Yeah, so we need to use that too as well.
All right. Yeah, I I mean, and those are the changes for now. Those are the changes for now. We just still want to put our feet down before we start taking ahead of what we we have in the in at hand in terms of uh uh growing. I think for this year, I, as the Lord is helping us. We just use it to establish more. And before we start thinking uh of other, of other things, like having school like we we were having before. Or thinking about before. So. Yeah. Any, any suggestion? Any addition? We just got our account for last year. You know, um, we could, when there was lockdown, we couldn't continue with our two thousand and nineteen and to twenty twenty January account. So, that one just uh was done this week. Yeah, I went to uh take it, it uh, it was Minister Gift that helped us to, for this signature of the account. Uh, is in the school. I should have just show everyone. And but this in this school right now. So, I'm waiting for the, this one for twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. So that I can submit both of them together. Although, that of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is late. Uh, I believe uh the department, we understand. It was during the time of COVID. Yeah, when all offices were locked. And by the time they opened, there was no money to pay accountant. So, I'm going to submit uh both of them by the grace of God when this one is out. So, as I still want over to you.
Yeah, so it will be submitted uh or completed and things submitted, everything uh this week. Because I think we don't have much transactions which have been in twenty uh twenty twenty. Yeah, so I think it will be easy for them to depict in terms of the any uh changes. And they are not going to take much time in terms of I think analyzing everything. So, I think this week, you are likely to get it.
If if we can be ready this week, that will enter. I'm just going to return that to submit the two of them. Yes. So that you know that you are not owing them.
Okay. No, that, that's it from me. And I've I've got the trip to come back home.
When to laugh like you, we don't know what you're saying.
That's right. Okay. Oh, we are done.
Thank you. Ma- ma'am, I just sent you the picture on the uh on your phone, if you can check.
Oh.
The picture of what?
No, ju- if you check your phone, you will see it's the picture which was there in twenty eighteen.
Okay, I'll check it.
Yeah, with Bishop.
Bishop is shaking the head here. You you guys look at like twins, eh?
Yeah.
You know, they 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 they, the marriage on the same family, what do you expect? They are, they are hit with a lasting comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chef, what do you have to say?
I I was taking the picture for this meeting and I think we'll share on the, on the chat. Yeah, but that one was yours anyway. Yeah, this one.
Mister Business, are you there? Yeah, this one. I just left.
Oh.
That way.
This is not trick or data.
Data.
We we are, we are done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for
For making yourself available.
Yeah, man, can we, yeah, can we
Like he's giving us problems, guys.
Okay, can we pray? We can closing prayer.
Let's just pray in time for the one. They could sum and agree to go like a talaba, a talaba, a talaba, a talaba. They could sum and angry they go to scan take a talaba. But we pray for all the families represented. Their children's, children's, children's. Oh, the family they represent, they are the entire family members with the glory of God. That your grace will rest upon them by T L. I also pray for Pastor Stewart, oh God, I hate what happened, how people came into the house to steal everything. I agree, Mr. Russell, in the name of Jesus. Your presence and your glory will go with us all the days of our life. We will remain and dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Continue to heal, continue to deliver, continue to restore, continue to bless everyone that is with us right now. Talking about the progress of every Christian Super Kids for school. Father, we thank you. We'll come back, ladies, to talk of the schools in time to come. Thank you that this vision will live out. It's too many according to the vision that you have given. You cannot die. It will come to pass. Also, our individual vision that you have given, Lord, cause it to come to fruition. Cause our family members and our sons and daughters to do well in the name of Jesus. We declare our home is heaven on earth here. We declare in the name of Jesus. And Holy Ghost will be glorified in all our homes. We know God takes absolute control. Thank you, Father, for blessing us in every area. We resource it. He be riches in treasures, oh God, so that we be able to advance your kingdom in every positive ways like never before. Thank you, Father, for blessing this servant of God with my wife. Yes, Pastor Stewart and Tuffy, Minister Gift and Mercy, we thank you for all that you are doing in our individual life and families. For the testimony that is coming over to you beyond the glory forever. We are here to serve you. We are here to live our life. We are here to become custodians of your mystery so that all of us will come to know Jesus through us and through everything that you are doing in our life. Father, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Wow.
Thank you, dad.
Please, man, regard to Pastor Stewart. I'm sorry, what happened, eh? I let you guys travel and somebody came and used back, he connected everything in the house. They will not prosper. They will not prosper. They will not prosper. They will not prosper. While they are watching, God will continue to increase you.
Amen.
Lay fast, his son, draw the gate, shall not be well with the wicked. They could send the a cat talaba. They call us the talaba haso. Please, you summon, create a lack, who send a man angry in the kiss, so that has that God continue to give you a standing testimony that you are standing in.
Amen.
Amen.
In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Hey, I was telling my Hey, I was telling my wife, I said, me pastor, Tuffy's teaching. I miss I was telling my wife.
Both of them.
As he settled.
They must come and preach one Sunday.
You remember when he just settled, I start dissing it at one after the other. I hope you are teaching where you are now. You guys are not preaching there, you're not preaching there.
I knew, I knew you would catch us. Uh, no, it is well.
Yeah, we miss you guys, really.
Yes, you do.
Remember, if you are not preaching and teaching there.
I miss them all.
See you, love you.
Bye. Oh, it's cold, I'm taking my clothes.